Our July 24, 2023 meeting is now called to order. We'll have an invocation by yours truly. And then our pledge of allegiance, Councilman Nielsen, can you lead us in it?
Sure.
All right, let us stand for prayer. Shall we pray? Gracious God, our Father, we thank you for this day, another day, an opportunity to come before you and on behalf of the people of this amazing and great city to conduct business to their interests. My God, we just pray that we would execute the city's business in a way that is decent and in order. We also pray, God, that you would guide and look over our city, that you would continue to hold us in your hand, as we say, and that the projects, the endeavors, the plans of this city will be well. We give you glory and praise now. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right, thank you, Mr. Councilman. Pledge. All right, next item is the read and approval of the minutes from our July 10, 2023 meeting.
May I make a motion that the minutes of the July 10, 2023 meeting be approved with there be no corrections and adopted and dispensed with the reading of them?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to dispense with the reading of the minutes or to adopt them as they have been recorded. Any comment here at this time about this motion? Okay, CNN, Mrs. Hamilton, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Before we go any further in the meeting, want to say this note, we always say it, but certainly want you to hear to it. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones during this meeting. The City Council encourages public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. However, this time limit may be reduced if there are numerous speakers on a particular item. To ensure efficient proceedings, all persons addressing the City Council shall state their name and shall speak in a civil and courteous manner. Speakers shall address the agenda topic only to which they are speaking on and shall not be repetitive. Members of the audience, please respect the rights of others and do not create noise or other disturbances so as to disrupt or disturb, disrupt or disturb persons who are addressing the City Council, council members who are speaking or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. Thank you for adhering to these instructions. All righty, next we have special recognition. I'm elated today to have Ms. Louisiana with us, Mackenzie Scroggs. Did I get that right? All right, Mackenzie is here with us, and I shall not forget when I was, received the text message that Mackenzie, who is a Northwestern State student, had won this pageant that is highly competitive. So, Mackenzie, we're going to ask that you would come to the microphone and just state your first and last name, and you could just, however you want to address us.
So, I'm Mackenzie Scroggs, Ms. Louisiana, 2023, and I want to thank you so much for allowing me to come to this City Council meeting. Natchitoches has become my home away from home. I've been a Northwestern student for the past two years, and this community and the campus has truly become my home. I love it so much, and this community is so supportive of everything that the campus does, and I'm just so thankful to be here.
Well, I tell you, Mackenzie, you've really made us proud. I know how my folks on campus, you know, Dr. Jones and all of leadership and just, you know, students, everybody feel really proud about your accomplishment here. You were one of 27 young women.
Yes, sir.
Capable young women, and you were victorious. Now, for me, I just have a couple of questions. I don't know if the council would have some questions or some comments as well. But some of these competitions, you know, that you have talent, you have answering the questions. Wasn't able to watch, we had, Keith Frank was here that night, so I wasn't able to watch live. But what are some onstage expectations during the Ms. Louisiana pageant? Some of the things you had to do?
I think the most important thing is just to stay true to yourself. I actually started a program at the age of 15 called Being True to Being You where I implement my confidence building workshops across our state of Louisiana. So, when you are onstage, you want to make sure that you're being yourself so that the audience and the whole state of Louisiana could truly see who you are and that you're being the best version of yourself because you're being truly yourself, no matter what.
Do they make you do a talent or something like that, too?
Yes, so talent is 20% a part of our score, and I'm actually a dance major at Northwestern State University, and Northwestern is the only college in the state of Louisiana to offer the four-year dance program. So, I was really honored to be able to showcase something I've loved and something I've been doing ever since I was two years old on that stage.
Really cool, really cool. Now, you made a little history as well. I guess even before winning Ms. Louisiana.
I did.
I watched the video put out by our folks at NSU, and they stated that your mother won the Lady of the Bracelet. Is it a pageant as well?
Yes, so the Northwestern Lady of the Bracelet competition is a preliminary to the Ms. Louisiana competition. So, my mom was Miss Northwestern Lady of the Bracelet in 1998, so she was able to compete at Ms. Louisiana, and we were the first mother-daughter duo to ever be able to hold the title of Miss Northwestern Lady of the Bracelet and be on the bracelet. So, as my year as Miss Northwestern Lady of the Bracelet, I was able to wear the bracelet with both my charm and her charm. So, it was a very special moment for both of us.
It's wonderful.
Now, can you briefly tell us what lies ahead for you? I know it's going to be a busy, busy year.
Yes.
As Ms. Louisiana. Not everything, of course, but what are some of the major events in your future because you are, you know, you're the winner this year, so?
So, actually, this weekend, I'll be able to be at the Louisiana Sports Hall of Fame all weekend, which is super exciting because I'll get to come back to Natchitoches and spend the weekend here. But I'll be able to compete for the title of Miss America in January. We're not sure the specific dates or where, but as my year of service as Ms. Louisiana, this is a job, and I'm the spokesperson for Louisiana, so I'll be able to travel the whole state of Louisiana, implementing my program throughout schools and different activities, being able to truly just showcase what this organization and what, who I am and what this organization does for so many young women. We're a scholarship organization, so as Ms. Louisiana, I've been able to achieve over $55,000 worth of scholarships. So, I'll be able to attend Northwestern State University debt-free, and I wouldn't have been able to do that without this job.
Awesome.
That is awesome. Again, we can't say how much, you know, how proud of you.
Thank you.
That we are. Counsel, I don't know if you have comments or questions before we give the presentation to Mackenzie?
Are you prepared to do a little dance step? No.
Well, actually, fun story, the, I guess, couple of days before Ms. Louisiana, I ended up breaking my toe. So, as a dancer, you deal with a bunch of injuries and, you know, all kinds of stuff like that. So, I went on with my way, went to Ms. Louisiana, performed, of course, and it ended up breaking again. So, the boot's always in my car, I ride around with it, but when I have the crown and banner on, I do put on the heels. But I actually am in a boot right now, so it's a little fun story, but, you know, everyone's journey is different, and that's what I like to say, that my journey to become Ms. Louisiana was, I guess, a little bit different than I expected to be. And at Ms. Louisiana, while I was performing my talent finale night, the top of my costume came undone, so I had to perform the whole entire dance with one hand holding it while the other one is dancing, which, out of my 18 years dancing, that's never happened. So, everybody's journey looks different in life, and, you know, I'm glad to have my journey.
Well, that is cool.
Proud of you.
Look, it's very simple, but we just want to say congratulations on behalf of the City of Natchitoches, presented to Mackenzie Scroggs, 2023 Ms. Louisiana, in acknowledgement of achievement on this date, the 24th of July in the year of 2023, in testimony whereof, we have set our hand and affixed a seal, City of Natchitoches, so we'll present that to you. I do need to say that we've tried to coordinate this, I think, since you won, and we really appreciate you becoming available now, and this wouldn't have happened without Jill Leo reaching out and, you know, being the point of contact for it. So, we really thank Jill for doing that. But we have a picture with you.
Oh, yes.
Right here in the center.
I want to ask, Mackenzie, would you mind taking a picture? My granddaughter be able to take a picture with you before you leave?
Of course.
She's, she's in a dance class right now, and I'm thinking she's amazing what you've accomplished.
All right, next thing is we've got a very exciting project that Chief Nguyen, I know he and his department have worked on for some time, and I see he's got his, Mr. Corey Leo here as well. So, Chief Nguyen, I want to just, you direct us how you want to present this?
So, the first thing I want to say is thank you for letting us have this little time. The most important tools that any of us could have in our toolbox is our employees. But when they come up to you with the ideas, you try to let them run with them. Well, this idea, Corey come up with a good idea. He was, he became a fire prevention chief back in 2019. Isn't that right, Corey? Or 18? 18. Year or so. Anyway, he come up with a good idea, so I turned it over to him. So, what I'm fixing to do, I'm fixing to let Corey take over this and let him talk a little bit and tell him about the project because he's headed this up. I'm letting him run with it and let him go with it. So, Corey, it's all yours.
All right, thank you, Chief, Council, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for letting us have this time, as Chief Nguyen said. So, this project was sort of a brainchild that I had when I came here.
Just for the record, Corey, I know Chief has said it, but if you would tell us who you are.
Oh, sorry. Corey Leo, Assistant Chief for Fire Prevention for the City and Natchitoches Fire Department.
Thanks a lot.
So, this was a project that I started coming up with when I came back here and we started ordering fire prevention, fire education, and safety materials, and I noticed very quickly the low quality of the things that we were getting. They just, I'm just not built that way. I don't like that kind of thing. I want to put something in someone's hand that is memorable, educational, and that they can really get something out of. So, I started having conversations with Ms. Rebecca Blankenbaker with Kane River National Heritage Area, and she and I kind of got together and we partnered on this, and then we started talking to some other community partners that came on board with us, and we could not have made this happen without them. So, I definitely am going to recognize them. Ms. Carrie Beth at Bank of Montgomery, thank you, guys. Alliance Compressor, we have Ms. Michelle Brundage here with us. Epic Touch, do they have a representative here tonight? State Farm Greg Baker, Ms. Ashley is here to represent them. The Natchitoches Parish Library and Warehouser, and of course Kane River National Heritage Area once again. But what we came up with, as I've put in front of every one of you here tonight, and if anybody else in the audience wants one, this is not only our first-ever custom fire safety coloring book, it is about the city and the parish of Natchitoches. It has scenes from the riverbank, it has scenes from the Grady Irwin Trail, it has scenes from Cassachi, it has scenes from Central Fire Station. That includes, when we give these out in our area, the kids who are here, they can look at it and go, oh, I know that. I know that place. Well, not only did we were able to do that, as you all know, we have Sparky the Fire Dog. He's a huge hit, but we were not able to use him due to copyright issues in this book. So, the designer said, well, how about we just come up with your mascot? So, we did, and we came up with, as you can see, Ash the Alligator, who will now be at the front of our fire prevention, fire education programs for the city of Natchitoches. So, like I said, we could not have made this happen without all of the partners that came on board with us to help us make this. And the really cool thing that we were able to do through these partnerships is we will be able to put one in the hand of every kindergarten through third grade in the entire parish when school starts. So, we will be delivering these to the schools at the appropriate numbers to put one in the hands of every kindergarten through third grade in the entire parish, because it doesn't just stop right here in the city of Natchitoches.
You said what grade, Corey? I'm sorry.
Kindergarten through third grade.
Okay.
So, we will be able to do that, and then we will actually have more. We will be able to do some reprints. We will also be putting all these individual pages onto the city's website that individuals will be able to go there and download individual pages whenever they would like. So, we just wanted to do this because I wanted it to be about Natchitoches. I wanted what we do and what we represent to be in front of anybody that we talk to, and especially when we hand these out. We're going to be getting all sorts of things. Chief Nguyen and I are looking for funding now to create a life-size mascot that we have seen for years, March in the Parade, as Sparky. Well, we wanted Ash, so we're looking for ways to do that right now. So, be looking for that because it will be coming, so. But if we could, I would love to get a picture with our, with our community partners and the council and the mayor, if that's okay. So, any?
This is cool, man. I mean, like you said, it's got the details in there. Now, BOM, what is this mascot?
So, that's their mascot.
That's our owl.
That's their owl.
Yeah, you know, I've seen it. No, no, I've seen it, I've seen it.
Not every partner has a mascot.
Right, right, right. I've seen them at events before. They certainly got a plug in here.
But, yeah, we've got NSU in here, we've got everything that we could try and get in here that is a true representative of our entire parish, not just one area, so we are very excited about it.
I think the mascot is perfect. I mean, Alligator. Real cool. Ash the Alligator.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I see it. Awesome. Questions, comments, counsel, for Assistant Chief Leo?
Nice.
Great program. Thank all of you for making this happen. This is tremendous.
You've already got them produced and everything?
Yes, I've got 5,000 of them.
5,000?
I do.
So, they're going to the schools?
We will put approximately 2,300 throughout the parish for the kindergarten through third grade, and then the rest of them, we will be giving away 1,000 or more at.
Which way?
Which Way to Main Street, which is, which has turned into one of our biggest events for fire safety that we're able to get in front of that many kids at that, at that one day. It's a huge event. We're at NSU tomorrow. Today is the first day that a group like this is seeing this. So, tomorrow, we'll be doing a press release, we'll be starting to release things about Ash, the coloring book, so, yeah.
Along with our open house in October also.
Yes, open house that we have in October, these will be there. So, I'm not going to try and lay 2,000 of these out tomorrow because I don't know what kind of crowd to expect at tomorrow's back-to-school event at NSU, but I'm hearing it's going to be pretty big, so. But we're going to be there doing some other things at tomorrow's event also.
Will you also be putting some at the library?
Yes, yes, we will be dropping it probably 500 to the library, and then at BOM, they, I'm going to give them some that they can use at their place. Any, any of our representatives that want them, we will gladly put them there, but I want to be able to get them in the hands of all the kids, and then I'm going to start trying to get in with the daycares also, put them in the daycares and things like that for, for every kid to be able to take them home, so.
Okay, right.
Great. Well, great work, y'all. Chief, I know Chief has been talking about this for some time, and it feels good when it finally is, is here.
Able to see, able to see the fruits of your labor.
There you go, there you go. All right, so who all did you want in the picture? Y'all know you got your.
All our representatives. I'd love to.
Okay, let's do it, let's do it.
Bring our books.
You know how they come back, they'll come home and say, Mom, did you do this? Mom? Happy to check your fire station. There'll be eggs for it.
It's a water.
Oh, it's late today.
I'll be back.
Okay, everybody, fire safety, let's sign up.
It's been sweet.
I can never sleep at home.
Thank you.
Great, great. Thank you.
We forgot prayers, sorry.
So, again, once again, thanks to everybody who was involved and made that happen. Of course, it's our teamwork that makes the dream work, as we say. All right, we've got one ordinance here for final, meaning it was introduced the last time, and Councilman Nielsen is the one who's assigned to this tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 39 of 2023, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchitoches to award the bid for Professor M. Richardson Park improvements. And whereas Resolution Number 41 of 2023 was passed by the Natchitoches City Council May 22 to advertise for bids for Professor M. Richardson Park improvements, and there were two bids, and they were both local. First one was regional construction for $503,978, and second bid was marked metal for $657,860. Whereas the above-appointed committee members unanimously recommend the city award the bid to lowest bidder, Regional Construction LLC, in the amount of $503,978, and I move that we adopt ordinance number 39 of 2023.
Thank you.
All right, motion made and seconded. As we have stated on numerous occasions, this is mostly being funded by an Office of Community Development grant, that's a state agency. Remember, the grant was called Love Louisiana Outdoors, so $400,000 funded through that state agency. And so, when we got the bids, there's a gap of about 103, and we've identified where the rest of the money could come from, and I, so we're not redundant, I want to allow Clarissa later on, she has some budget amendments, and I think that's tied to, you know, the 103 that we have to finish funding. But as Councilman Nielsen noted, this is the lower, we got two bids, this is the lower bid of the two, so as we, you know, we, we have to do that, but I think it's going to be some good work, some needed enhancements to the park. Those have been well-reported, inclusive playset, remodeled restrooms, walking track, and I think doing some adjustments to the parking and things of that nature. So, this came from feedback from members who live in this community. So, this is behind Steins on the, on Lake Street. I don't know if there are any comments or questions at this time. Okay, Mrs. Hamilton, CNN?
Eli?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next few items, next four to be precise are for introduction, and the first one is read by Councilwoman L. R. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 040, 040 of 2023, which is an ordinance adopting a policy regarding the use of mobile devices and to amend and reenact the Personnel Policies Manual of the city of Natchitoches to amend a section entitled Mobile Device Policy, providing for advertising, further providing for several mobility, and for repealer and effective date of ordinance. Whereas pursuant to Section 105 and 106 of the Charter of the city of Natchitoches, the city may exercise such power and authority inconsistent with the city charter or in, or its law. Whereas further, the city has the right, power, and authority to promote, protect, and preserve the general welfare, safety, health, peace, and good order of the city. And whereas the city of Natchitoches adopted a Personnel Policies Manual, the latest version was dated June 1, 2003, as revised. And whereas further, the City Council of the city of Natchitoches desires to amend the Personnel Policies Manual to add a section stating the policy of the city of Natchitoches for use of mobile devices, said section to be titled Mobile Device Policy, and to be located in Section 4 of the policies of the Personnel Policies Manual. Whereas the City Council of the city of Natchitoches desires to amend the Personnel Policies Manual to add the section which shall be entitled Mobile Device Policy, and which says section, Mobile Device Section, Policies shall be enforced. Employees who violate this Mobile Device Policy may be subject to disciplinary action up to and including termination of employment. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Natchitoches, Louisiana as follows, the Personnel Policies Manual of the city of Natchitoches shall be amended and reenacted to add a section to be entitled Mobile Device Policy. This ordinance shall go into effect upon publication in accordance with law, and I move for adoption, ordinance number, I'm sorry, this is for introduction only.
Yeah, introduction. Ed and I spoke earlier, I think that's some additional comment he can make for understanding.
Yeah, when we renewed our insurance policy last year, Travelers Insurance, they reviewed our personnel handbook. They look at all kinds of things when we renew a policy, and they reviewed our handbook, and this was a, I'll say a recommendation, but it was strongly recommended that we adopt a, the hands-free, or as I say, the hands-free, the Mobile Device Policy. And they even asked later as a follow-up, what's the status on it? So, we finally, it's in there, it'll be in the handbook now, once approved at the next meeting, but it's something that's overdue with all the technology that's out there today. We need to be proactive on it and hopefully, you know, show that we have a policy and, you know, we're being safe.
That's pretty much the gist of it. Comments or questions, counsel?
Yes, so every employee shall receive a person, a new personnel handbook or not?
No, ma'am, we don't, we don't give those out every time. They're too expensive to print them every time we make a change, but it will be in the new handbooks as they are printed.
It will be in a new handbook.
It will be in the new handbook, so they are printed, and I'll make sure that it gets distributed to all the city employees.
And I guess it's kind of like when we have enough that we've changed to the Personnel Handbook, then we'll make copies. That's how we've typically done it, Ed?
Well, typically, we let the department heads know and then get them to get the word out to their departments, to their employees in their department.
Any other comment or question, counsel? All right, again, this is just for introduction, so if there happened to be something that emerges between now and the next meeting, certainly reach out. Ed is certainly capable of clearing anything up that needs clarity, okay? All right, the next item, just for introduction, is read by Councilman Harrington.
This is ordinance 41 of 2023, which is an ordinance to amend Chapter 31 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Natchitoches in order to allow for the operation of ride-sharing applications in compliance with the statutes and regulations of the state of Louisiana and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Whereas the state of Louisiana has determined that a statewide framework for ride-sharing services benefits communities where rideshare services are not currently available, and whereas in furtherance of the stated goal of making ride-sharing available throughout the state, the legislators adopted laws that allow for ride-sharing services that meet specific criteria as set forth in Section 2191 of Title 48 of the Louisiana Revised Statutes of 1950 as amended. And whereas the city of Natchitoches, state of Louisiana, acting through its city council as governing authority, has determined that Chapter 31 of the Code of Ordinances of the city dealing with vehicles for hire may be in conflict with the Ride Sharing Act. This is for introduction only, and what it, what it does is it, it amends our code of ordinances to match the state's law, which was passed concerning ride-sharing.
Yeah, I think Councilman Harrington said it perfectly. Mr. Conley, Gary is here with us today, Alex is not feeling as well, but is there any additional comment you need to make about this particular piece?
No, sir, it just generally substitutes the state statutory scheme in Title 48, Section 2191, with respect to ride-share rules, as Eddie pointed out. To the extent Chapter 31 in the Code of Ordinances is inconsistent with the state scheme, the state preempts the local rules as to ride-share.
Counsel, you have any questions or comments? Okay, all right, again, this is just for introduction, so something we'll address at our first meeting in office.
I just have a question, and maybe, help me with this. We do have a transportation van here. Is that something that's, that will affect them or not?
No, not to my understanding.
It's not that that's going to affect this transportation van that we have, currently have?
It's only the ride-share.
Is that something that will affect them or not?
No, not to my understanding.
It's not that it's going to affect this transportation van that we have, currently have?
It's only the Ride Share, Ride Sharing Act vehicles in Title Forty-eight that preempts chapter thirty-one.
This is like Uber and Lyft.
Like the Uber, okay. I just want to make sure it's not going to affect that. Okay. Nothing to do about it. I just wanted to clarify.
And I think it's worth mentioning this note. It's a startup company, and they're primarily designed for students who've been drinking, just trying to provide a safe environment, safe way back for them to get back to their residence. So I think that's what's going to be their primary focus. So certainly if it can reduce any impaired driving, you know, that would be a positive in my view. So, okay. But if any questions emerge, we can certainly get them to me. We can direct them to the right person who can answer the questions for you, okay? All right, next item on the agenda is Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero-four-two of two thousand twenty-three, an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget to reflect additional revenues and expenditure. And this is just for introduction only.
All right, Clarissa?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so this ordinance is to make a budget amendment, no additional revenues, but there is just some interchanging of how some of the expenses are classified. As the mayor spoke about earlier, there is some additional costs in regards to the Richardson Park project that we needed to cover in a sum of a hundred and three thousand dollars. And then there is some engineering and design fees for the Texas Roundabout that we needed to cover those expenses for as well. So we just looked at our budget to see where we could carve out some funds and cover those unexpected costs. So with the Richardson Park project, we took a look at the basketball courts that were going to be installed, and we looked at that and said that we could take the sixty thousand that we budgeted for that and put it towards completing the project itself. The basketball courts were going to be purchased by the city, and it has always been the plan. But because we had these additional costs from that project, we said that we would hold off on installing the basketball courts. That will go in Richardson Park and put it to just completing the base project, and then we'll go back later and do the project for the basketball parks, I mean, the basketball courts. And then we also, so that covered sixty thousand of it. And then we were able to get forty-three thousand from the budget line item for drainage. We have enough to cover that. And with Matt, some of the things that he is going to do as far as his capital projects this year, we'll cover any, you know, needs that we have in that category. So we were able to take forty-three thousand from our drainage line item. And then for the engineering fees, we took a look at our street project. We needed a hundred and sixty-five thousand was needed to cover the additional cost of the engineering cost for the Roundabout project. So we took a look at our street projects. We were able to take ninety thousand from the street projects. And then we're also, we're able to take seventy-five thousand from our contractual services consultants. And this is a line item that we budget for any consulting needs that we need for the year, any type of projects that we would otherwise need consultants that can't do in-house. This is the line item that we budget for, and we're able to take seventy-five thousand from there. So that gives us our one hundred and sixty-five thousand that we needed for the engineering cost for the Roundabout project. We originally budgeted some funds there, but not enough to cover the actual engineering cost there.
Thanks, Mrs. Brown Smith. Comments or questions, Council? It's covering these projects that, and part of it is you get the bid after you already do the budget. So it's kind of what some of it is. All right, again, this is just being introduced tonight. It'll be up for a vote in our meeting in August, first meeting in August. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda. It's read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number forty-three of two thousand twenty-three, an ordinance to designate funds from the American Rescue Plan to complete the construction of certain properties in the City of Natchitoches that are essential to public health and welfare and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Whereas further, section thirteen-ten of Title Thirty-nine of Louisiana Revised Statutes of nineteen fifty as amended requires that when there has been a change in operations upon which the original adopted budget was developed, the governing authority shall adopt a budget amendment in an open meeting to reflect such change. And whereas further, the American Rescue Plan of two thousand twenty-one enacted by the Hundred and Seventeenth Congress of the United States of America, ARPA appropriated two hundred thousand dollars to the state of Louisiana, which was then appropriated to the city. And it's the ARPA Building Fund for the purpose of financing improvements to vacant and abandoned properties, including rehabilitation or maintenance, renovation, removal, and remediation of environmental contaminants, demolition or deconstruction, and greening vacant lot cleanup, rehabilitation projects. Whereas further, this governing authority has previously appropriated five hundred and fifty thousand for the repair and complete construction of properties that are in dangerous and unsanitary condition, which makes them unsafe and a danger to public welfare, the John Deere Building. And whereas further, the office of the mayor of the City of Natchitoches is proper recipient of the ARPA building funding as the instrument of the city most capable of managing rehabilitation projects for the John Deere Building. Whereas further, it is the desire of the governing authority to appropriate the ARPA building funding to the office of the mayor of the city to be expended by the mayor of the city or administrative designee of the mayor, finance director pursuant to the guidelines published by the United States Department of Treasury in its final rule implementing the Corona virus state fiscal recovery fund and the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund established under the American Rescue Plan Act effective April one, two thousand twenty-two. And be it further ordained by the Natchitoches City Council in legal and regular session convene that it hereby appropriates the ARPA building funding to the office of the mayor of the city to be expended at the direction of the mayor and finance or the finance director pursuant to the ARPA guidelines. Be it further ordained that if any provision of this ordinance or application thereof is held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect other provisions, items, or applications of this ordinance, which can be given effect without the invalid provisions, items, or applications. And to this end, the provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared severable. And this is for introduction.
Thank you, Councilman. Similar to Richardson Park and that the engineering funding or the engineer costs for the Roundabout on Texas Street, this is just getting, identifying where we're going to get the rest of the money for John Deere. We budgeted five hundred and fifty thousand, but I think the low bid, which is a local contractor that's going to do it, Martin Metal, was seven thirty-two. So that gives us a difference of one eighty-two. And we're asking that you would approve two hundred thousand from ARPA, which would leave us, excuse me for not having the exact number, I think around four hundred thousand or something.
Yes, sir.
From ARPA, somewhere around there. So to fund the John Deere, which we're going to be the new home for the Public Works Department. By the way, we had our kickoff meeting on last week. They got the notice to proceed already. Did they start today, Donna?
No, sir.
They didn't start today? Okay. But they're ready to go ahead and get started, and this is just to finance the rest of the project, is all it is. Comments or questions? All right, again, this is, again, introduce, or if there happens to be something that, you know, you want to ask, please reach out, email, call me, however you want to do that, and we can answer any questions you may have. All right. We have a resolution on the agenda, and it's read by Councilwoman L. R. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution number zero-seven-zero of two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise and accept bids for the two thousand twenty-three street rehabilitation program, which is bid number zero-six-six-three. Whereas the city wishes to advertise for public bids for the two thousand and twenty-three street rehabilitation program. And whereas the bid advertisement for this project shall be on August third, two thousand twenty-three, whereas sealed proposals shall be addressed to the City of Natchitoches Office of the Director of Purchasing or received at the City of Natchitoches Purchasing Department, fourteen hundred Sabine Street, Natchitoches, Louisiana. Whereas the City of Natchitoches will accept sealed and electronic bids for the project until two P. M. on Tuesday, September fifth, two thousand twenty-three, at the Office of the Director of Purchasing, located at four hundred Sabine Street. Whereas bids will be publicly opened and read aloud at the location and time herein above. Whereas upon receipt of proposals, the committee members consisting of Clarissa Brown Smith, Director of Finance, Ed Lee, Director of Purchasing, Donna Forrest, Senior Public Works Director, and Eddie Harrington, Councilmen, ought to review and make recommendations of the bids received. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Natchitoches in legal session convene at the Honorable Ronnie Williams Junior Mayor B., and is hereby authorized and empowered and directed to order the publication of above bid. And I move for adoption, Resolution zero-seven-zero, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Simple exercise here, just to go out for bids. We originally budgeted a million dollars for streets. We had to use part of it. I'm asking that we are permitted to use a part of that to, for the engineering for Roundabouts. So we're about nine hundred and ten thousand available. And I believe I shared with you all. I don't know if you all looked at it, but that's an email. Really, Nick asked if he needed to be here. I suggested not, simply because he developed the Capital Improvement Street Program, I think about two years ago. And this is really just Nick, what's next? You know, what's the next most critical need street? I did discuss, Council, with you some, hopefully, potential alternative funding, but we'll have to kind of work that little bit and see if we can use that in the future. And that's why we didn't include some of the streets on this particular project, so, on this particular list. Now, I know we all wish we could fix all the streets at one time, but because of scarcity, because of budgets, you, we, you know, we do the streets that we can. And so Fat Grounds is one on this list. Carve Avenue, Thomas Street is another. And then maybe...
Whisker Street.
If the numbers come in a little lower, we had some alternate streets, I think, that we could add. We could decide to add one of those alternate streets, or part of Amulet, I think, was one. I don't remember all of them, but shared that email with you. And that was basically Nick's response. And I thought, instead of him being here, share his thoughts with you. And so, want to go out for bid.
This is the phase-two project? We were talking about earlier, phase-two project? You know, we have phase one, two, and three. So would this be the phase-two?
Well, I have to figure out how Nick names those, because he goes into, you know how he does it, Ed? He goes into a new fiscal year.
Yeah, he and I talked about this, and we changed fiscal years. And so we didn't want to use phase-two from a two thousand twenty-one project, two thousand twenty-one budget year. So we just, we start a new fiscal year. So we just called this the two thousand twenty-three street project.
Okay, so any of those streets that were listed in the phases prior to going to be part of this?
I don't, well, it's the streets that the mayor just named. I wasn't involved in selecting the streets, so I'm not sure. But it was, the mayor just mentioned the streets. And they should all be in that list that Nick had, the streets that are in the most need.
Any other comments or questions, Council? Any comment? All right, seeing none. Mrs. Hamilton, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. The last item on the agenda is the financial report by our finance director, Mrs. Clarissa Brown Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. So quickly, we'll go through some of our most current tax projections so far this year. So the first one you'll see is a pie graph there. And this is the one I don't usually show, but I thought that it would be very informational. This is showing how each, how the money is distributed between all three of the entities that participate, so the city, the school board, and the parish. So as you can see, the city is in red. So you can kind of see our piece of the pie there. And so far, six point seven million. The next slide, you should be able to see our tax collections for the actual calendar year. I know it's a little small up there, but the tax collections, looking at the calendar year. And right now, we are just slightly below what we received in two thousand twenty-two. We're only seven thousand less. So still trending in a good direction for the year. Again, we've collected six point seven for the year. The next report that you will see is comparing just the month of June, June being our first month in, you can go back one. I think we had two charts on one. Yeah, there we go. So June being our first month in our fiscal year. And you can see that we are trending upward. We have eight percent more in collections than we did same time last year. So trending upward in our first fiscal month. Okay? The next chart just shows some of our TIF districts and our collections there, looking at our hotel occupancy tax. In TIF District A, we are at thirty-five thousand for the year, the actual calendar year. So we're trending upward, because when you make an estimation on that, we're looking at about seventy thousand. Last year, for the whole year, we collected sixty-eight thousand. So we should end with a positive trend upward. TIF C, you can see that we are at a hundred and nineteen thousand for the, I'm sorry, for the calendar year. So trending at about two hundred and forty thousand for the year when we make an estimation there. Last year, we were at two hundred and fifty-five thousand, so slightly below that, but still trending very, very close. If you take a look at the next slide, so looking at some of our economic development districts, I definitely wanted to share some information here. District A, you can see that it's thirty-four thousand, trending, once we estimate that, should trend upward to about sixty-eight thousand. And last year, we were at fifty-one. So definitely looking for that to be a definitely positive, major increase in that particular district. District C, two hundred and twenty-one thousand so far. So we are estimating that to be about four hundred and forty, so definitely higher than last year. And last year, they were at four hundred and eleven thousand. So just kind of wanted to share some of that information about our economic districts. We have the new economic district E. So they don't have any comparables, but being that we're in our first year, but we have collected thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars there.
And E is going to be Riverside Commons?
Yes, sir.
That means that Mill District is F?
Yes.
Hasn't started just yet. I think it starts October one, just if anybody was wondering.
And that's it, yes, sir.
Any comments? Any comments or questions, counsel, for Miss Clarissa Brown Smith? Okidoki.
Yes, sir. We're at a hundred and three thousand.
Yeah, so we budgeted sixty thousand for the basketball court, we're still going to do the basketball court, but we're going to push it back just a little bit, so that gives you sixty, and then you mentioned the forty-three coming from drainage.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, so I did mention for the hundred and three thousand, sixty thousand that were, that was previously budgeted for the basketball courts, and then forty-three thousand that was previously budgeted on the drainage line item.
So sixty thousand come from where?
The basketball courts that were going to go in Richardson Park, but we'll just put it to the base project of Richardson Park, and then we'll come back later and do, probably do a separate allocation, or maybe in the next fiscal year we look at putting the basketball courts in.
Okay, and just for, the question was asked, where is the forty-three thousand coming for, for the Richardson Park? We had a four hundred thousand dollar grant, just for clarity. We always ask you to download Golden Natchitoches, there are plenty of events on the app, certainly hope that you would encourage other people to do that, and if you, I know Revive, but if we see posts, share about the Golden Natchitoches app, all right? Our next city council meeting is on the fourteenth of August, and regroup as well. We haven't had to use it, but it's kind of a thing where, when you do have it, and something does happen in terms of a hurricane or an ice storm, we can send those messages out. We do it as well as I mentioned for when we have some power outages and things of that nature. This was mentioned earlier about Assistant Chief Cory Leo, really big event for us in the city of Natchitoches, as we are looking, you know, students are heading back to school, back to school, so tomorrow, from four-thirty to six-thirty, there's going to be a back-to-school expo, and there are several partners with the school board on this, I think they have a list on Facebook, the city of Natchitoches is one. We did something in the park last year, but we said, hey, let's merge our efforts with the school board, just made sense, so they're going to be in Prentice Coliseum on tomorrow from four-thirty to six-thirty, and free backpack filled with school supplies. So make sure we pass the word, I've been trying to share on Facebook, and I know Aziza has been sharing through our city of Natchitoches page, but please make sure you get that out there tomorrow to individuals. Now, you heard Ms. Mackenzie Scroggs mention this, really important event for the city of Natchitoches, and I know I'd said something before, sometimes things become so familiar, you don't realize how valuable they are, but we are the home of the Louisiana Sports Hall of Fame. And so what that means is every year, people who deserve recognition in their respective sports and are being inducted in Louisiana Sports Hall of Fame, they spend a weekend in Natchitoches. And this year, we've got some great athletes, but there are some free events associated with it, open to the public, one being the welcome reception, which starts at five at the Louisiana Sports Hall of Fame building on, you know, front Jefferson. We also have the Rockin' River Fest, it's going to be that Friday, this Friday, going to start at six o'clock, so fireworks, great band, you're going to see all of the inductees there, you'll get to see them. Now Eli Manning, I think is probably the biggest name, right? But Elena Beard is going to be there, Paul Menary, legendary LSU baseball coach, Matt Forte played football for the Chicago Bears, Wendell Davis, I remember seeing, and some others who, but we'll have those individuals right here in the city of Natchitoches, so. And then the training camp is something that's open to children, they get a free Raising Canes card, free T-shirt, and they get to interact with some of those people I just mentioned, the Elena Beards, Eli Mannings, Paul Menaries, and others, and some sports events, so really good to have this here. So I just want to encourage everybody to come and support it, especially on that Friday, especially for the welcoming ceremony on this Thursday, and be a part of that, because again, this could be somewhere else, but it's here in the city of Natchitoches, and I want to encourage all of us to take part in it. All right, so looking forward to a great weekend. This Saturday, we still have the Farmers Market from eight to twelve, I think that's been going well. They always come up with great things, last Saturday was the Mini-Makers, not sure if there's a theme for this week, but of course, they do a great job in organizing that, the setup and the breakdown of equipment that goes along with that. We have another Farmers Market Day, August fifth is the next, after that, okay? All right, this is Coach D, she does a lot of great things in the community, I think everybody has heard of Coach D before, but she's having a back-to-school edition. So you've got several groups doing some things, with, of course, a really big one happening tomorrow, Coach D has something in City Park from ten to one, and that is on the fifth, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, so plenty of opportunities, she's got her sponsors down there, there are plenty of opportunities to get some things, as, again, we want our kids to have a successful school year. Is that the last thing, Steve? Okay? All right, let's sit here to those announcements, counsel, is there anything else? Oh, I see you, Gary.
Mayor, I apologize, Alex wanted me to emphasize the safety motive behind ordinance oh-four-one, I think you covered the fact that it was primarily designed for students who've been drinking to provide a safe ride home, and that the reason for the startup company is to provide a safer environment for the students, so safety was really a heavy motive behind it.
Thanks a lot, Gary, for reiterating that, appreciate it.
Also, someone sent me a text, someone else will be having it back to school, I think on the sixth of this month, at the MLK Park, so I think it's from five until seven, I want to say.
On the sixth, that's a Sunday?
On the sixth, that's on a Sunday, yeah.
So August sixth?
Yes.
Okay, we did receive another one in our office, Sharra Washington, what is her name?
Yeah, Crayons and Confidence, I think.
Crayons and Confidence, is that the same one?
Same one.
Okay, so yeah, that's the same one, I think we may have shared it on Facebook, we'll share some others as well. All right? If there's nothing else at this time, we hear motion to adjourn.
May I ask some of the adjournments?
Second.
Motion to be made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, have a good night.